Over time.
Okay. And what I've heard.
What I've heard.
So.
Um.
Um. Any suggestions?
What's that?
Well, let's just start a video.
Tunnel for Point.
Where's that?
The X. I don't know. She.
Well, to. Hey, I'm answer.
There's some nice.
Okay. Oh, you're up.
Next one. Oh, uh, Tom Gordon, Tom Mindy. Your members, regarding the proposed rental, there are several concerns involved in the events. Both number of events for this offense are too high, unimportant, and are allowed in too many zones. Likewise, I'm also concerned about allowing apartments and condominiums, zones, especially low density zones. A lot gathers of three times the permitted sleeping capacity of the residents without calling it an event, thereby needing any permits just to lie. A small home that sleeps four has twelve people stop by, it may not be too bad, but what if the home sleeps eight? And then twenty-four people show up, they get excessive, it goes against the islands' low-impact lifestyle and everyone's priorities. And preserving low density standards, and quote, as stated in the new comprehensive plan. That's a rule come and enforce the number of attendees, the understaffed police department, a part-time zoning administrator. If a neighborhood rental property exceeds this number late at night, and I call and wake up a TPC or town board member who all mentally approves this ordinance. They come out and help come heads with it, so the proper enforcement action can take place the next business day. Others are tracking their money because the CA now office on the top of the state. Likewise, along events about one hundred people in the R one, S one, W one, W two zones is too much. Remember that W one and W two are low-density zones, who in their right mind would define one hundred people as low-density. By allowing events in low-density zone, we're already violating the intent of the conference plan. Just as I mentioned above, who's going to count the number of people at an event? Police, CA, a TPC member, or town board? I can also see non-scrupulous landlord telling a tenant, wish the whole of market event to do all the planning themselves. Hence, stage, catering, et cetera, and leave them out of it so the landlord can clean ignorance and won't. And yeah, I know some will say this scenario was covered, that was old quarters, but I don't think it ever be enforced. It's helped, and I don't think of the ban events in the C one commercial residential zone. A little history list. When someone was enacted in the early nineteen seventies, nearly all the businesses were in the downtown area mixed and with residents. Since they were both co-existent uses, it became C one commercial residence. Fast forward to the nineteen eighties and tourism became more prominent, strongly known and conject. Anyone remember the luau that every summer at the pub and the mess that followed that event, such as adding the ambulance as a drop? That happened. What about the slew of noise complaints in the nineteen nineties by leapers against Tom's burned-down cafe after it burned down? So much so that a north earth was created. But the point I am trying to make is that so many conferences, such as a commercial residential zone or a misuse zone should be avoided. By allowing events that are one, W one, W two, and S one, you are creating completely. I'm not blaming those who created the virtual residential somewhere in the early seventies. They may have assumed that people would still have weddings and receptions at a church, not in an investor's rental intention. Or there would still be relatively quiet businesses only open during the day. Such as a hardware store, gas station, bank, remember those? Grocery store, or a bottle repairer. Unlike those who wrote the zoning ordinance in the early seventies, the current TPC and town board have the benefit. Of fifty years of history to look back in and to not create future zoning conflicts. By long distance held outside the existing C one from our hit residential zone at the request of a local minority. This minority may claim that without events, their civil and proprietary rights will be violated. Along with the pursuit of happiness, livelihood, and generational wealth. But what about neighboring property owners' rights? What about their piece in play, a spectrum in a low-density zone? Or does one investor's financial gain trump the neighbor's piece in play? I could go on and on, but to sum it up, I ask that you limit events to the existing C one zone. And to resist any attempts to create a misuse zone. I am also concerned about allowing apartments and condominiums as conditional uses of W one, W two, and S one. Please note that these are relatively low-density zones. The proposed comp plan states that preserving the island's low-density standards are the priority, C page seven of the document. Again, by allowing high-density uses and low-density zones, we're already violating the comp plan before the nicks even draw. Remember that conditional use permits must be granted as per state law. Only reasonable conditions may be imposed on a C eight. This now makes conditional uses to become permitting. As such, I request that apartments and condominiums be refused as either conditional or permitted use of the W one, W two, and S one zones. Don't screw this up. Yours very truly, Paul Grummer, like Ronald Point President.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, can the future email out something that says, don't miss this chance to say something? Be sure to write in there, no three minute limit. Now, I understand you're trying to limit a filibuster.
Down.
But for crying out loud, government-only work parachutes aren't relevant, it's gotta be old.
Thank you, Paul. You were on stage then. Okay, Charlie, you gonna follow your brother?
Sure. Uh, your commission members, I would like to comment on the latest version of the rental ordinance in which I mean, or if it is concerning me. As your resident and expert, tunnel point. Wrong events permitting events of any size at residential property outside the C one district. It is displaced and as a property owner in the S one zoning district should not be allowed. Along with such vertical events, it's not in keeping with the low-density character of the R one, S one, W one, W two zones. And it's confirmed, the majority of the partners participated in the recent comprehensive plan survey and forum. For instance, fifty-nine, fifty-four point nine percent of surveyers, one to restrict vertical development outside the central business district, while only fourteen point nine percent wanting a vertical development to skirt. Island's forty-five point nine percent maintain island rural character, although it's eight point five percent favor free-terried vertical development. Time and time again, the general consensus is that he's in quiet in there. Prefer or thoughtful fish outside of the C one zone. Why that's important for allowing commercial events in low-density zones on existence? As you know, real important on the subject and the terrible definition of events. What is it? Events, concerts, laser light shows, sporting events, et cetera. Third-term rentals are necessary for a town-wide hotel move. Adding the ability to host unlimited events that with one hundred fifty currently permitted third-term rentals is a problem. But it's interesting how they have in mind, we limit events to higher-density C one district only. Point number two, apartments and condominiums. Notice the addition of apartments and condominiums to the rental ordinance, either of which is currently exists in the zoning ordinance. Apartments and condos should not be allowed for permitted or additional use due to the permitted use of meaningless condition. At the R two, S one, W one, and W two zones. Makes absolutely no sense to locate such high-density development in low-density zoning districts not serviced by sewer. The C one and R three districts are higher-density areas that sewer access. It is also opposite the desired goal of majority of respondents in conference plan survey, of which forty-nine percent listed condominiums as lowest priority. Housing types in the town, that the town should prioritize in the next ten years, while only six point nine percent said it should be the highest priority. opinions of apartments are even less likely, twenty-eight point two percent saying they are lower priority. Thirty point nine percent giving them highest priorities, apart from a rating endorsement. Once again, we limit such uses to higher-density zoning districts only. Number three, two-year sunset clause. No two-year sunset clause trial period plea. That is just an end around the playing grandpa who's dead or perpetuity going forward. Make it intelligent, official, and be sure your decision represents the revised comprehensive plan. Whether you agree with the plan or not, keep in mind that it is the community's plan, not the will of few individuals to make progress with changes to their rental order. Point four, infinitial well. Through the definition of well, it's annual, it's a required sanitary. That they require sanitary landing permits. How is this enforced? Since Gatten County doesn't need sanitary permits or fortified, but they then might be allowed in the nominal laws, the nominal well. Prior to valid sanitary permit, logic seems to dictate that certified is not allowed in the division, then wrong will be given for it's debt. Very much dying once again, enforcement becomes dangerous. Point five, well, in multi-household. Third bullet point under this definition was three separate tiny homes belonging to one lot is plowed, which is triple density. Why is that there when not four or five? This is excess and should do no more than two per lot. Definition is multi-household, not multi-well, the two homes in each site should be planted. As we change the rental and zoning ordinance, is to make it easier for higher-density commercial uses to include trades, low-density residential, there is not a debate. Either just continually making exceptions to the rules, or running a complete and repeatable to have, but. It's no accident that we have such a beautiful island, which is appreciated by both residents and residents law. It's due to the hard work and dedication of past generations to preserve this place for future generations to enjoy it. Ask yourself, why am I here? The town board, compliance convention, and general public, need better understand the role and reason to be out zoning. Under who some believe can't do anything you want anywhere you want. The zoning and rental ordinance is to provide some retention for those residential zones that are being acquired. Thank you very kind, Paul.
Thank you, James. Okay. Hey, man. I know you're thrilled to do this.
Yeah. My name's David Markford, uh, reference of the point. And, uh, I had some comments on the proposed changes to the point ordinance, regulate properties. They go by section, you don't have the, it's enough familiar with it, it might get a little difficult, but here we go. Section one point five, used or occupied, should you mean just used or occupied? Intent, arrangement, or design is subjective and is not defined. Also, intent, arrangement, or design can be changed. I suggest deleting that part of the definition. Section two point two. Several individuals dwelling. What is the meaning of this? Several is defined as three or more, but not many. Why not just say three or more? Uh, section two point one. Of two point eleven. Does this section apply only if the area of dwelling is being rented? Second shouldn't say so. Excuse me. Section two point seventeen. Where is the, whoa, where is the permitted sleeping capacity defined? Is it a permit? If so, maybe the ordinance should read three times the sleeping capacity allowed in the permit. Section three point two. What is the point of twice the annual permit fee for a new or lapsed application? It does not make sense to me. The friend was a dumb without a permit, a citation may be issued. The person doing the permitting is on payroll anyway, so why is town charging more for an administrative duty of a common employee? I suggest dropping that sentence. Section three point three point one. This section references section two point two five, this is confused. Why not say short-term rentals are defined in section two point two five of this ordinance and are listed as a permitted use in the zoning districts designated in the ordinance? Section three point three point two eight. Why are short-term rentals not allowed in incidental dwellings? If incidental dwellings must meet code to be approved as rental units, then the short-term rentals should be allowed. Section three point three two D. I believe this prohibition is completely out of line for island residents. What is the point of leaving a rental property vacant if it's not rented for seven days? Does it make a difference if a place is rented for seven days by one family or three days? By one and four days by another? Why also triple the fee? There is no extra work on the part of the town. Same person approving initial premises on a payroll for the same number of days. This is tri-schollging, and I suggest that the triple fee be dropped. Section three point four B. The attorney suggested the change from eight rooms to six rooms. Why? What was wrong with eight rooms and twenty people? Does the attorney have a stake in this? I suggest keeping the old language. Section three point eight point one B. Why is there a prohibition on, a prohibition on renting incidental buildings for short term? Again, what is the point? I suggest that all the dealing, all the dwellings be allowed to be rented for one or more days. And section three point nine point one B, I have the same comment as above. What is the point of limiting rental days? Any dwelling that has a rental permit should be able to be rented for one or more days. Section three point ten point C. Incidental dwellings should be able to be rented for one or more days. They must meet the code to get the rental permit, so why is this limited? I suggest changes. Section four point one F. Landscaping is not defined, very subjective. Where is the prop, where on the property is the landscape area to be located? I suggest dropping this section, I don't think it can be enforced. In summary, I think that residential properties should be allowed to rent for one or more days regardless of the type of dwelling. And permit fee should not be doubled or tripled for new or late additional people dwellings. Limiting rental bases not only hurts the property owner, but also hurts all the businesses on the island. That police submitted, Dave, for.
Thank you, David. Okay. Anybody here that has a letter to read? Yes.
I think Lucy Severs. And for those of you who don't know me, I'm part of the prone in Samstrom families. Go out to Greenwood Cemetery and see my family from living on the island since the mid eighteen hundreds. I'll tell you this, just, I'm telling you that just to make sure you know I'm not an investor that the proposed rental ordinance is labeling me. My family, along with other island families, have been renting out their properties for years. It's the only way to afford and to keep and enjoy. And contrary to what the ordinance states, I do use my properties when they're not rented. The proposed changes to the short-term rental ordinance trouble me. I feel I'm being singled out along with other multi-property permanent holders who are also being taken as investors. First of all, I legally rent out my inherited properties, knowing it's my right to do so. And make the continued financial decision to invest in and approve the properties. Keep them viable rentals and to keep up with rental codes. Proposed changes to the ordinance will make that difficult or impossible to continue to do so. I would like to know why you're tripling fees only for multi-permanent holders and why the triple? Are there new costs specific to us we need to know about? Have there been problems with our rental units that warrant the speed hike, or is this just a fine? It's important for you to know that the new proposal to force us to remain vacant if we can't rent for the entire seven-day period. Will make it difficult to pay the new triple B, along with all the other costs of renting. Power, sewer, phones, cleaning, repairs, taxes, et cetera. All of which benefit the local economy. Why not increase all the rental permit fees across the board at the same rate? Why not shut down the other rental categories for a few days as well? I find this proposal very unfair. On another note, I also find some of the language in the ordinance surprising. To quote the ordinance, to make sure property owners don't play games and try to get around this distinction, short-term rental owners. Must disclose upon requests all properties in which they have an owner interest. Play games? Sounds to me like you're assuming that you're going to cheat. And we're always been and always will be a law-abiding citizen and will adhere to any new or old ordinance about playing games. Everyone seems to be afraid of investors ruining the island. But then why is there one of the best rental spots on the island still in the market? Which manner? It would make a great VR field for an investor, and it's still listed in the Wall Street Journal for all of you to see. In short, I love this island and am committed to this island as is everyone in this room. We all know change is inevitable, people in certain stances come and go, but why constantly establish rental businesses? That are already in place and that got here by hard work and financial commitment. We are a benefit to the community and economy and we are not a threat. Thank you, Lucy Severs.
Lucy, will you give that to? Hey. Uh, Thomas Gavin, we have a letter from Thomas Gavin. Looks like we gotta read it. Okay. Three point three, short-term rentals. Short-term rentals must provide evidence of current liability insurance with limits of at least a million dollars per occurrence. The certificate of insurance must list the town of Lapointe as an additional insured. I strongly disagree with naming the town of Lapointe an additional insured on my private business policy. It is inappropriate and without standing. Should a guest staying at Sumatra, um, Cara be injured by the neglect of the town or its agent? That responsibility cannot and should not be shifted to a private business or citizen. For example, if a guest staying in Sumatra is biking along Highway H and is negligently hit and run over by a municipal vehicle resulting in property damage. And severe bodily injury, the incident has nothing to do with deficiency or neglect at my business and property. There is no need or justification for including the town as an additional insured. It would only cause confusion. Peter Haves. To the town leaders who have worked on these documents, thanks for all the work you have put in on the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. My comments are below. A sixty-one of the comprehensive plan document identifies the highest priorities for land use. Comprehensive plan, that was last, we'll go on to. The ordinance to regular rental properties might add another type of dwelling to the definitions in, in section two. And on to the grid at the end, by identifying dwelling. Investor-driven short-term rental as a specific type of dwelling, the document might help clarify some of the discussion of the issues involved. These are businesses and should be regulated as business. Such regulation might impact short-term profits for some investors. But it could maximize long-term profits by maintaining the natural environment on the island that brings vacationers here. And could help build community and long-term sustainable business if it allowed more young entrepreneurs to make homes on the island. Multi-family housing should remain in C one of R three zones as is currently is. And not expand to R one and R two. Events at investor-owned rental dwellings are business activities and need to be regulated as businesses. Businesses are best in the C one zone or might be accompanied by expansion of the C one zone. I was turned Miller Road among, along Middle Road and out to the airport along Big Bay Road. Thanks for the chance to comment, Peter Haven. This is Daniel. Where's Gala? Okay. I'm not in favor of seventeen minimum for short-term rentals. My story is one that started in nineteen seventy-three when my parents brought us to Madeline Island as a family turning the lakeside town and cities. We loved the island in the warm feeling we had being on it. My parents inquired about a hotel motel to stay, but none was available. So with no place to stay, we left the island that afternoon and I didn't return till approximately nineteen eighty-nine. When we stayed in a bed and breakfast because still, as before, no hotel or motel was on the island. We didn't stay seven days, we stayed only two nights and went home from Monday morning work and school. Now with the little savvy internet planning on the, on the visitors' part, a family can book a weekend visit and experience Madeline Island for as short a period of time. Or as long a period of time as they can afford. Neither the tourists nor the property owners suffering any undue hardship to enjoy such a wonderful little island. It would appear to me that limiting the available short-term rentals would certainly open the door for major hotel motel brands to build on the island to supply the rooms required. To maintain the accommodations required to have the island function as it does now. Short-term rentals provide jobs for cleaning staff, yard maintenance, for yard maintenance persons. And contractors who replace and repair the homes that serve these travelers. Oding yes to the proposed rule change is like personnel, personally voting people up this island, and I can't support that. Is considered that familiar faces and young families, this drastic change will cause invoke now. Okay. I'm starting to get tongue tied. Want to open to do that one?
I have a letter to read.
Oh, okay.
Do I write? But yes.
I know Paul will go ahead, then you can go after Paul. I know Paul will go ahead. Then you can go after Paul.
This is from Barbara West. In two thousand and four, I lived for a brief time in the Hamptons in New York. What happened in Bayfield on July fourth, two thousand and twenty-three with traffic being backed up through Bayfield on all three streets to get on a ferry reminds me of those days. Driving to Sag Harbor through twenty miles of backed up traffic. I could see it someday being backed up to Highway Two. Unfortunately, this course has left station and I don't see it getting any better. Still, we are on the island, have a unique situation. We aren't overdeveloped with Culvers and McDonald's and cheap gift shops and bug stops. We all know why there is a very limited season in which to make money. And the rest of the year, it's four hundred people. McDonald's would never invest in a store that could only make money three months a year. It's why Marriott has not snatched up Woods Manor. I have no fear of a corporation coming in and buying up all the land and building Airbnbs, thus preventing people from having affordable housing. One doesn't have anything to do with the other. I have voiced my concern about page seventeen, three point three, short-term rentals that forces proprietors to leave their rentals vacant if they rent for less than a week. Limiting the owner's ability to do business in the high season charges owners three times the cost of fees. This will do nothing to help with overdevelopment or increasing long-term rentals. I'm for renters wanting to hold an event, having to pay an event fee, and some clear guidelines for events that adhere to regular noise ordinance. For affordable housing, perhaps the town can instigate an initiative like Occupy Madison did when they moved the homeless camp into a tiny home village. Perhaps we could find someone who already has lots of land, like Bobby Artsel, to be part of planning a tiny home village for people who want to build community. I will address these ideas at the Affordable Housing Committee. Thank you again for all the work that you do.
Thank you, Paul. Cedar wants to read her letter and then Marie, you can read whatever you got there.
I'm Cedar Jimka. I have been in the island for thirty-five years. I appreciate the permitting of incidental dwellings for long-term rentals and would like to see it expanded, permitting incidental dwellings for short-term rentals. Specifically, short-term rental of one camper unit located on the same property where the owner is staying, possibly with composting for subjects so as to not burden the town subject. I am a housing insecure resident who does not live in a rentable dwelling. Short-term rental of an incidental dwelling could be a critical revenue stream that would allow my family to greatly improve housing security with access to funds to put in a well, ability to build a properly winterized structure, or afford to build a kitchen for greater food security. This addition to the ordinance could also provide a mid-level vacation rental option between tenting and renting a hotel room or cabin, making the island more accessible to lower-income, more lower-income visitors who cannot sleep in a tent and don't have access to their own campers. Finally, if you provide housing to short-term employees who may be working on a project for one or two weeks, please consider this addition to the ordinance. Thank you.
Yeah. Paul, can you take that?
Reece got one to read. This is from Todd and Kimball. If whom it may concern, I'm writing to address some of the concerns of the ordinance to regulate rental properties, especially the rules that mainly are for the investor and landlords here on the island. I own a vacation home on Mount Monbom and Trail, and I genuinely value the comfortable, friendly, and secure living environment that Madeline Island provides for me and my family. I'm hopeful that the concerns that I raise in this letter will be taken into consideration during the decision-making process. I am mainly opposed to some of the rules you have for investors and landlords that have property here at Town of La Pointe Island. Opposed to the proposal where investor landlords can only designate one property to rent as often as they'd like for an amount of time, up to twenty-nine days. And the proposed rule of all their proper, all their other properties can rent no more than seven days. Investors should be able to rent all their properties for any length of time. They have bought lighted properties, fixed them up to rent, which has benefited the island. They have brought tourists to the island, and in turn, they spend tourist dollars, which the island and the people who live on the island benefit from. These proposed ordinances would have huge devastating economic impact on the livelihoods of the housekeepers, carpenters, ferry operators, restaurants, grocery stores, and investor landlords. The island survives on tourists spending money to help support our workers that live on the island. Many tourists that come to the island stay three to five days. If they had to stay and pay for seven days, they wouldn't come. They would most likely go and stay in Washburn, Bayfield, or Red Cliff instead. Turning visitors away by having restrictions on the number of days that they can stay would impact the island revenue negatively. Everyone living on the island purchased a home, homes, or cabin as an investment property. Restricting individuals, landlords, investors on what they can or cannot do with their property is penalizing them. They have gone out on a limb spending their hard-earned money to fix uplifted and delinquent properties, which in turn everyone living on the island benefits from. In my opinion, time would be better spent on creating some type of grant or TIF money to help private owners to fix up their historic homes on Madeline and to provide more affordable housing to the hard-working employees that live on Madeline Island rather than making more restrictive rules. I would like to also state for the record, I would be in favor of not allowing corporate hotels or restaurants to come on Madeline Island. This ordinance is not already in place. I hope that the concerns I have raised will be taken into consideration during the decision-making process. Thank you for taking the time to consider my viewpoint. I am genuinely concerned about the livelihoods of the working residents, landlords, investors of Madeline Island. I'm more than willing to engage in further conversation or discussion rather, or provide additional insights to help create ordinances that will benefit the residents, landlords, investors, and tourists of the island. Please feel free to reach me and contact information. Thank you, Todd and Kimball.
Thank you. Mike, we're gonna do letters first. You got a letter? We're going to do letters before comments. You have a letter submit?
Not that you can read.
Hey, why don't you wait then? Okay, this is Glenn Kowalski.
I'm actually here. I didn't think I was gonna be able to be here, but that's why you know I'm here, so.
Okay, I haven't seen you in so long. I didn't know you. Okay, here.
I just waited to do my comments.
Well, then why don't you read your stuff?
Well, I'd rather just, just make my comments.
Well, I got the letter, so I was.
Okay, I am writing to express my strong objection as a property owner for more than twenty years to the proposed change to the rental ordinance to allow private properties to host events with up to one hundred people. The proposed change to the rental ordinance is really a wolf in sheep's clothing. By allowing what would be a commercial enterprise, such as a wedding venue, to operate in a residentially zoned area, you're essentially changing the zoning for an individual who operates a commercial event business. This goes against the spirit and intent of residential zoning. The event part of the ordinance should be taken out of the proposed changes to honor the spirit and intent of residential zoning districts. Otherwise, you are creating an exception for a very few entrepreneurs by violating the zoning covenants that all other residents live by. The town could face legal action by proceeding with the proposed rental ordinance change allowing events, which in reality is changing the zoning laws for the very few.
Oh, thank you. Can I have the sheets back, please? All right, we've got one here. You want to take one? Jim? All right, this is from Leslie Livingston. Zoning and Planning Committee, regarding the ordinance to regulate rental properties, section three, Regulation of Rental Uses, three point one, General Conditions, number four, A.D. We may be unable to attend the zoning meeting scheduled for August thirtieth regarding the proposal for some rental properties to legally hold events such as weddings. I would like to express our concern and desire for this part of the proposal to be eliminated from the zoning regulation of rental users. No one that I or other neighbors have personally spoken with is in favor of this. If residents are going to be affected by a zoning change, they should be notified before changes are made. And none of our immediate neighbors have been alerted to this event proposal. According to the future land use map that I looked at, these changes would have an impact on most of the lakeside residential properties on the island. We are the homeowners at Old Fort Road and Capsard Road. These areas are labeled R one and are considered residential, not commercial or any other land use designations. There are selected zoning districts on the island that are set up specifically for events and run by island businesses that know how professionally handle the myriad issues that are involved. We value our peace and quiet, our family time, our neighbors, and our enjoyment of nature. We are concerned about the traffic, safety, noise, and drinking, the litter, the behavior of people who don't understand or respect the island property that they are renting. Please consider deleting this proposal. If you still feel the need to consider it as a courtesy, please contact those people who would be affected in residential zoning districts C one, R one, S one, and W one, and W two. That is a lot of. Somebody whistle? No. There's a lot of island residents, and I seriously doubt that many would be in favor of this. Where did this proposal come from? Thank you, Leslie Livingston and David Milk.
All right, and this is from Linda Mack. Commissioners, I appreciate the effort you have made to accommodate the many challenges of drafting a new rental ordinance for the Town of La Pointe. Overall, I would say you have done a good job of splitting the baby, recognizing that short-term rentals provide important income for island homeowners and guarding against the current threat of investing companies taking over neighborhoods. There's one area where I very much disagree with your proposed ordinance, and that is in the permitting of large events in private homes that are rented. This is a commercial use and should not be permitted in residential areas. And unless I read the ordinance incorrectly, there is no limit on the number of events with attendance up to one hundred people. We have experienced a couple of large events in our neighborhood, and they are extremely disruptive. Buses sit idle. There is a good deal of noise from music and conversation and from people coming and going in cars or buses. The noise tends to continue into the night. Madeline is a place of activity and fun, but I would guess that most residents understand that noise activities take place in commercial areas designated and zoned for them. The value of the peace and quiet of the places they live, the prospect of events of that size in residential areas is a cruel blow to peace and quiet. The idea that the number of events of that size would not be limited is unconscionable. It is deeply at odds with what most of us value in residing on Madeline Island. I do hope you will reconsider this section of the ordinance.
This is signed by many, many people. To the Town Planning Commission, current draft of the Town of La Pointe rental ordinance. Thank you for the Town Planning Commission for continuing to engage the members of the Madeline Island community on this important topic. We have reviewed the current draft of this ordinance and appreciate the consideration and concern the town is taking in balancing interests among our community members. Encouraging long-term home ownership and stewardship is paramount in maintaining the peace and tranquility we all value on Madeline Island. Furthermore, we have an appreciation of the challenge that the TPC faces in revisiting the ordinance given Wisconsin statutes, right-to-law, and stakeholder interests. After reflecting on the current proposal and investigating what other Wisconsin communities have done to improve the outcomes from residential rental activity, we recommend the following enhancements to the rental ordinance. Large occupancy rentals. Currently, there are at least twelve residential rentals on the island advertising occupancy cap, cap, the, 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 half the of sixteen people or more. These investment-first properties run contrary to the spirit and notion that some islanders use short-term rental income to offset personal expenses. To be sure, we have commercially zoned inns and motels that have similar or smaller capacity limits than these large residential rentals. The city of Madison, Wisconsin, has enacted the following policy concerning tourist room housing, short-term rentals. The maximum number of guests is twice the number of legal bedrooms, up to a maximum of twelve guests. Children under the age of twelve do not count to are the maximum number of guests. Recommendation: Limit the rental of existing large occupancy, twelve or more people residents, to the provisions outlined in section three point three point two, sub bullet D of the current ordinance's draft. Whereas rentals must be for seven days or longer, if the length of the rental is for fewer than seven days, no other rental can occur in the additional dwelling for the remainder of that seven-day period. For new short-term applications, set a provision that the maximum number of guests is twice the number of legal bedrooms, up to a maximum of ten guests. Children under the age of twelve would not count to are the maximum number of guests. They just don't count. Taxation, taxation, residence, what if they're all teenagers? The island puts a strain on municipal services, resources, infrastructure. Historically, surges in island population have been driven by the come and going of seasonal homeowners. The group was primarily ten visitors, a smaller group of week-long stays, and fewer, yet all summer residents. That situation has changed, given the rented, when not owner-occupied motel that is commonplace to short-term rentals. We have more people on the island consistently throughout the summer getting the ship. As such, we need to levy taxes that are representative of this rental-driven increase of visitors. In Door County, Wisconsin, is the following taxes, thirteen point five, related to short-term rentals are collected. Eight percent municipal room tax, which is collected by the Door County Tourism Zone, five percent in state tax, which is collected by the state, five percent county tax, which is also collected by the state. Recommendation: Raise the lodging night tax rate to the maximal level to keep, help fund what is needed to effectively manage a growing short-term rental market. Rental Activity Administration permitting accounting auditing, support services, emergency law enforcement, infrastructure, water, sewer, et cetera. It is important to note that sales and lodging tax have a negligible effect on demand for short-term rentals, but are a significant source of funding for the municipalities in which they operate. Events. Unlimited events in residential areas do not seem to strike the intended balance of peace, tranquility, and prosperity among our island neighbors. As written, the ordinance allows for an unlimited number of events at primary residence rented for short-term. Recommendations: Limit the number of permitted events to one for ninety days, maximum of four per year. Any homeowner wishing to hold events above this amount would be subject to a conditional use permit, allowing impacted neighbors to engage in the review process. Again, thank you for the town and the Town Planning Commission for holding these discussions and engaging with the residents. Respectfully submitted for the undersigned. David Eileen and Haley Hendrickson, David and Jordy Eileen, Sarah Meeks, Doug and Catherine Booms, Billy Hacker, Hudson Hacker, Alex Hacker, Hecker, Erica Spandy, I don't know if I said that right. George and Judy Hecker, Jim Dickinson, Mike and Sam Dresen, Mary Dresen, Tom and Terry Dresen, JP and Nell, and Nell Jamison, John, what does that say? Bro.
Open tenders?
Yep. Lizzie Shoots, Robert Ba, Hank Woods, and Tom and Marcy Woods. Thanks, guys.
Moving on to classy and short weed. My husband and I were recently made aware by way of the Island Gazette of the plans to allow rental properties to hold events that include up to one hundred people. We have a home on Old Fort Road and spend most of our summers there. We love the peace and quiet, watching the animals wandering through our property and everything else that is wonderful residential, the residential area has to offer. You're now being informed about this new zoning that will allow parties to be held at rental properties. There was a wedding host in our neighborhood a few years ago, and people are still talking about it. We had buses and cars going up and down the dirt road for half the night. There was celebrating music that went on well past midnight, and then there were fireworks. I also heard that there were a few people passed out on the beach. So much for our peace and quiet. We appreciate that people want to come to the island to celebrate any number of events, but allowing these commercial operations to move into our residential neighborhoods is a huge mistake. There are commercial areas here that provide those venues and are equipped to handle those crowds. What sort of constraints will be enforced for a residential area? Do you limit the hours of the? Do you limit the hours of the event, the activities? What about traffic control, bathroom facilities, total cleanup after the party? Do you honestly believe that a late-night wedding will be shut down by the sheriff? Who is held accountable? I apologize for this late arriving email with the meeting taking place this afternoon, but I didn't see the Gazette until last night. I feel that every owner affected by this change should have received an email much sooner to allow them to weigh in with their responses. If this passes, I'm sure that you will have some very angry homeowners and another fight on your hands, George and Kathy Weet.
Hey, this is. Libby O'Brien. I'm sure if Peachy were here, she had something to say. Dear Mr. Schaper, we write here to express our opposition to a rules change proposal to be discussed at this afternoon's Town of La Pointe meeting concerning the ordinance to regulate rental properties. The rule we oppose is found on page 11 of the ordinance draft of 3223, item number four, part B of section 3. Events at residential properties are permitted only in zoning districts C1, R1, S1, W1, and W2. In part B, the regulation change reads, "Maximum attendance for permitted event in a residential rental dwelling is 100 people at a time." We oppose this change believing that it will deny us the quiet enjoyment we are presumably entitled to as property owners within a residential zone in our case, R1. Having lived in close proximity to a venue that has hosted large events in recent years, we have witnessed experience how much negative impact and influx of people, especially those with no vested interest in property upkeep or neighborly relations. A car traffic can be to a quiet residential area. Quite often, when large groups have gathered in this venue, we have experienced blaring music and frequently loud fireworks well into the night, racing cars, bright lights, and general disregard for us who live nearby. We have lived on Madeline Island for decades and choose to reside where we do because of the quiet natural beauty it features. Living the existing regulation in favor of one that allows large numbers of renters and the guests to congregate unchecked at residential rental properties around us and other like homeowners would be, we fear harmful not just to our way of living, but to the island itself. And once the genie is out of the bottle, we further fear that there will be no returning to the quiet enjoyment we believe should be ours as rightful homeowners and taxpayers. We ask that you emphatically reject the proposal and question.
I believe this is the last one, right?
Yeah.
It's from Michael Dalzell. Dear commission members, as residents who have been intimately involved with event planning on the islands for many years, we have substantial hands-on experience. There needs to be some regulation of these laws. The CUP process has been an effective way for this to happen, particularly allowing to just landowners input the permitting process. While we were involved in running events, we abided by the regulations imposed by the CUP process and found it to not be a detriment. To allow anyone to host events anywhere, especially in residential areas, keep their controls will only lead to bad outcomes. We know from experience that one adjacent property to our home has become an unregulated wedding venue. These thinking guests were loud late into the evening. Guests made free use of and left trash on our property. If the people running the event had clear notice of the limits to their activity, none of that would have happened, as well as the damp for to their party when law enforcement has to show up. You're very truly yours, Michael Dalzell.
Thank you. Okay, those who are dying to say something. Michael.
I'd start first off, I do not regularly do my progress, we know that. Now you got problems on a couple of these sections. Section 5.4 is that's complaints here. This ordinance that's in place has been in place for nine years and there has not been one complaint submitted so far by a property. So why we have ten more restrictions? There's not been one complaint at the District of Town Hall over nine years of the ordinance that's been recalled. Number, my second one is on section 3.3.4G, which is public safety. And I think that long-term and short-term rental properties should have landlines installed that are working because of our lack of cell service. And then they could see it's a safety issue and installing landline in order to get a rental company should be required. The other part in that same section is following the driveway ordinance. And I think that the affirmative issue, the fair change from the EMT director should sign off if the driveway is passable for a pardon this issue. Otherwise, the town is going to end up with some liability because we issued a permit and somebody, something happens and they can't call for help. The town is at deep pockets, so I think we should do that. Then I've got a question, I know it won't get answered, but this public hearing, all of the things you've read into the record and comments people are making, is it being recorded? Is it going to be in minutes? I mean, so it's going to be printed minutes and everything that's just been said? Or how will people that aren't in the meeting tonight know all the data that was said? So if you're not watching it on Zoom, but is it being recorded?
Yes.
Will we have a town website where you watch meetings, making lunch, town board meeting a day later? Is that going to happen?
Request a copy of the recording test.
Pardon me?
You can request the copy of the recording, Michael.
So what's? Can we request a microphone? You guys are hard to hear. Wait, I mean, the people, people have appeared, I mean, some people are watching online. But is there going to be a record of everything that's said? If somebody wants to get it, like how, where would you want to get it? Is there a minute? The DA is going to have minutes. Can we get the minutes of everything?
The minutes will not be verbatim. You listen to the recording, Michael, you know that.
I don't know that. I mean, that's been all the other meetings. There's minutes of town board meetings. There's no minutes of this that are going to be published on, that'll be on the website.
If it's requested, the DA will produce something. All right. Anybody else have anything to say?
I have a prepared statement, it's not a letter.
Okay, that's fine. State your name.
Won't be as good as what they're pretty often say. Norm Castle.
Oh, hi.
I heard a lot of not in my backyard. This is all come stuff. Yeah, the island is busy for three, four months a year, and that's an important economic engine for this area. Not just the island, but everywhere else people start to get gas and walk on, they build in Maine. And they shut down a person's livelihood because you want it not in my backyard. I like a piece of quiet too, but I expect the summertime to be pissed. So what are my qualifications to be on this subject? My family's been here since 1932. Lucy beat me big time, but we are going to be in Spanish. I've got 50 years of construction experience. I'm interested in that by the home I'm currently building on the island. And currently, 28 years a member of the National Social Wheelchairs. I built a realtor license in three states. And it turned out that my focus mainly turned out to be new home buyers and people building new homes. So very familiar with construction and how expensive it is to build on the side. Universal truth is the tale of the ant and grasshopper. The right way to thrive, to invest your energy, energy, and to creating things, whether a business or a bill. I would not be living on this island unless I had invested my time, money into real estate in some fashion. After I got out of the army, I started this cartwheeling making three bucks an hour. Now Howard image on the island for just a grunt, thirty, thirty bucks an hour. My pursuit of future, I could afford to come back and live here and took 50 years, whether the life or not, here we go. The Douglas's, myself, and others represent the ant who is preparing for potentially bleak future. They have demonstrated the entrepreneurial spirit and shown that it's possible to build for the future independently of corporation or governance. And their insatiable desire to suppress the masses with slave wages and outrageous regulations and taxation. I don't want to be a landlord because taxes. So I'm going, I'm forcing my property so we can remain on the property we set. Private property is just that, private. We have an absolute right to decide what to do with our property. The government may have a dubious plan to regulate for safety reasons, and I understand the need for taxes, so I pay them. At the same time, we're wasting valuable time on this. Well, the county is doing a reassessment of property on the island with the intent of raising more money from us without providing adequate police protection. But we want a representative on the island to address issues within 20 minutes of a rental complaint. Where's the police? They're not coming in 20 minutes, but the town wants somebody in there within 20 minutes. That's a fight for another matter. Here we are, the town trying to suppress the entrepreneurs in the name of the grasshopper, to use the word backward word, which is recently used very poorly. Whether we want to admit it or not, this island is already a financially gated community. And to think that limiting the order of one rental is going to open up doors for the disenfranchised and sheer nonsense. Talk about being toothless. On one hand, the town currently has a million people studying affordable houses. On the other, one of its thoughts, the only people on the island who would possibly take on such a risk. Till I was done building my own home, I wasn't prepared to preface for, but I'm in a way to present to the town. Planning board, the island building maybe at five flats, five tiny homes, and dedicating two units and seasonal employee housing on some other acres I haven't owned. Now I'm thinking I'm going to stop paying taxes on it when I land because the town is moving to make it worth it. I may even just donate it to the Church of Scientology, so what you got? Why only season? Because I'm bored to sell the guy's long-term housing, but I need a charter on these lots. And as most owners would agree, only once, 33 years of landlord, as a renter, return my property in as good a condition as one in Florida. I'm not going to build housing for people that are going to come up here and turn into squatters and trash them in a few months. So why would I bother? Now, how do you expect to attract investment to build? As I use this word, questionably, affordable housing? If there's no return on the investment, or do you plan on a twice and twice investment for the sweetheart deal exempting them from this asinine idea of special tax burden? What about those on the island who already own multiple units of their grandfathered? By trying to enforce this communistic policy, you are averting the island is a financially gated community. I have some report on the final fraud. Whose idea it was, I want to make sure I know who not to vote for next. And where do I sign off for that class action lawsuit? I remember a statement made by a previous administrator when I inquired, why do we have all these owners restrictions? And the reply being, we don't want change. Well, folks, that's the only thing you get, change. We got to be responsible to reverse people on it. Do things in the right way. It's called the planning commission, not a planned commission. Lastly, I'm considering a petition to the town to change its plan from, in English, the point to. You can't do that in your court.
Thank you, Norm.
I just had a couple of comments about the R1 and events planned situation. I'm a year-round resident. My sister lives in it, husband David don't practice down on Old Ford. And I go down there a lot. And I have been privy to one of the wedding events that they had, which I was absolutely baffled because it was a diesel bus that sat there all night long riding and then going back and forth. There was no traffic, just tons of traffic, no really good parking. That was dangerous. There were people going down and they, and other renters do this all the time when they rent that house. Go down to Grant's Point Beach, which is not a legal beach, it's a boat launch. But they go off and go here and there and everywhere. That's okay, you're allowed to do that, I don't care. But they were setting on firecrackers and fireworks with no care as to what? Ones that went off and didn't go the right way and went into the woods or next door and what could have happened? So I just think that this isn't going to work out. It's nothing to do with, it's so noisy and blah, blah, blah. It has to do with safety and consideration of other people that are in the area and the people that are renting the place don't care. And so I think to have an event like that consistently, because I know that's what they're planning. To have big events like that consistently is a danger to that neighborhood. There are other places to have large events that are assigned places. The other thing is, I would like to see the planning commission address the situation of developers coming in here specifically just to develop and they're investors, they don't care about the island. I think it's time that the town addresses that situation because it's going to start and work out some kind of zoning. I mean, it has to do with zoning and where we're protected from meta-developments.
Thank you, Terry.
My name is Bob Ba. I've been a homeowner here for 40 years, believe it or not, and quite enjoyment for mostly 40 years. And my concern is for the events. And I think the town should mandate all events to be held in town. Well, seriously, I'm in an R2, which says you can't have events, more of V and B in R2. But I know for a fact there's somebody that is in R2 who's planning on having events and they're building or fixing up their home if they just purchase. What is my remedy? What is my fallback to make sure that this person doesn't do this? I mean, who's going to enforce it? Who's going to enforce these rules that people are going to break? And they're serious. And, you know, for 40 years, I've kept my home, in fact, I got three homes. And I don't want to wreck with somebody having all the parties and weddings next to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Is it constructive, Tommy?
For you. Hi. I'm Tom Nelson. I second everything Lucy Seaver said and everything Dave Markport said. A little bit of fuck Bob Ba. But I want Wedding Island. I don't want bachelor party island. I don't mind bachelor party island. Okay? But I don't understand this meeting exactly. I've been saying for years that we have to have a meeting in the summer or the summer people think that we're going tricks in the winter. And we have to have a meeting in the winter. So this island people don't take that as a summer people to pull the trick. And having the damn thing on Labor Day weekend is a bad idea. Unless there's another one that we can have during the year when the island people can show up. Because I just came looking at him, it just came right straight from work, I don't even have notes. Okay? But I will say, anyone who's currently having parties and renting out their houses any way they want, they're grandfathered in. I suggest everybody else who wants to do it, start before they put this ordinance into effect and they will be grandfathered in. And who's going to add, is going to check all that? It can't be done, it can't be policed. We, we have a good bunch of people that come to this island. And there's a little trouble now and then. We had a noise ordinance and had to be put into effect by the demand of certain people. Look it up. Erdout Cafe has never had a ticket, let alone a conviction. We've had a couple of calls which have turned the music down and we do it. A poor call. But let's not return the music down. But Wedding Island is just something to celebrate, it's a beautiful thing, and that makes everyone a living. There's people misbehaving. Uh, there are already laws on the books to take their if we had, uh, you know, uh, the right police force and and of course we're going to get him a gun. And uh, yeah, there's going to be a complaint here and there. I have, I mean, I've had a number of weddings at my place. We have after-parties all the time, three brides in their gowns at one time. And they bring prosperity to us islanders who have worked very hard to save your houses. I don't see, Marriott is never coming here. It's just not cost-effective. This season is too short. And the Airbnb people are barely making it. But they are making it and they're fixing up the properties and they've never been a complaint. Now, Bob's neighbor, he's not grandfathered in this. He'll make a rule against him. But uh, everybody else is already doing it. It has the right to keep doing it because uh, and I say that as I became the only licensed real estate broker on this island in nineteen seventy-nine. And I've been a continuously licensed real estate broker till today, forty-seven years, ten years on the board of the zoning board of appeals. So I can fake it pretty well.
Thank you, Tommy. Anybody want to follow that one?
I'll say. I'm Clayton Douglas. Um. My wife and I have built up, you know, a small business of trying to survive on this island by doing anything we can every single day. We have a couple of rental properties. We've got a paint business, we have a construction business. Had a trail riding business for a while, you know, doing anything we can. It's hard, you know, the ferry is eighty dollars and fifty cents for me round trip. So that right there is going to be a prohibitive cost on your riffraff. That's coming over, you know, your party riffraff or whatever. I get that people don't like that there was a wedding down on Fort, Fort Rose. She should have had better parking, you know, she should managed her event better, correct? You know, I understand that. But there can be a happy balance between this, not my backyard. I don't want, I don't want a party over here, but then one day you'll want to have your friends over and have a barbecue and a party. Now you can have a little ruckus in your musical, but you said your neighbor couldn't. So there has to be a balance between that and on other counts, as far as limiting rentals by saying I can only have one main property at one price. And then my other properties, I have to pay an additional three times the cost. It's prohibitive only to small businesses. It doesn't prohibit large businesses at all. They could look at that fee and go, okay, no problem. They got checkbooks. I don't have that kind of money. I have to work every day for my, so you're just hampering me. You know, our small businesses on the island, locals, the only thing that hampers. So it'd be nice if we could find, I mean, I've seen other considerations that were made on this thing, so you guys are willing to work with it. So we take care of that and not just have the rental fee be the rental permit fee. If I want to start my business on July first every year, I should have the right to say my business starts on July first. It shouldn't start on May twenty-first or whatever. I don't have rentals that time of year. I read rental season, my rental year starts July one. And I should be allowed to say, hey, I want my permits for July one and I'll get them then and pay the two hundred dollars or whatever it is to get these. I understand the need for it, but it just doesn't need to be vindictive and cost prohibitive for certain small groups, but easy for others, people who aren't as invested. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Clay. David?
I have one more statement that I, it's not that should not have um regarding events in essential areas. I don't think we have a good, the ordinance doesn't have a big definition of what an event is other than the number of people. So what is an event? If I had, like Peyton says, when you have fifty members of your family, which we do have fifty members in our family. Is that an event? They may camp out, they may bring their tents. So I don't think we should be addressing this at all, events in the rental waters. It should just be out of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's the Wild West right now. I'm sorry, but it's the Wild West right now. It's wide open.
No. It's spoken. We got it. Oh, we got it. Okay, any other comments?
But can these people get rid of stuff, right?
All right, make it brief.
I will make it very brief. Thank you. It's, right now it's wide open as far as what's going on. Anybody could be running events all over. There could be events everywhere, every rental property out there. It's not happening. So this, it's again, this big scary monster that somebody's holding up and shaking, that isn't a real thing. I mean, it's hard enough to get people to come up here if they want, if one or two people a year want to have a small wedding, as long as there's reasonable rules somehow put there, I understand that, you know, yes, you don't want a thousand people or whatever, you know, it can't be so big concert, but at the same time, people should be allowed to get together and celebrate their life and their happiness on this beautiful island without the infringement of the government constantly on. Thank you.
I just have a reply. I'd like to reply to that. I agree with you, Clayton. But I know for a fact that certain people want to have wedding, their place as a wedding venue every single weekend if they can. And that's just not fair. That's just not right.
Well, it's, it's not about what's, I mean, fair or right.
Well, it's not fair.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anybody have anything new to say?
Just an additional point there is I don't have a problem. It's like, I didn't, I stood, I identified yourself.
Identify yourself, please.
Oh.
Len?
My car was. You know, I don't have a problem if someone wants to have a wedding venue and have weddings every single week. But not in a residential district. That's why we have zoning on the island. So do it in a commercial district. And I always say, I agree with that, but not in residential districts.
Okay. Alex, say who you are.
Yep, I'm Alex Nelson. I live on the Big Bay Road. Uh, I am neither someone who rents town guy nor someone who has rental property on the island. Uh, I am someone who cares deeply about both the future of what this island becomes and the accessibility uh of this special place to a lot of people and anyone who really wants to come. Uh, and really, biggest thing that I have to say is it feels like, uh, though I have great gratitude both for the, as well as the committee that wrote and rewrote the ordinances. Uh, my understanding is that the ordinance was not in compliance with state law previously. And I would ask that uh we for the moment, uh, get in compliance with state law. And then after that, convene a work group of folks that rent on the island, folks that have rental property now and general residents of the island to come together and write something together as a community that we can get behind together and uh use to, uh, I guess protect, that's the word that I have in my mind, protect the unique sense of place in this island, which is the number one priority of the conference, of the conference plan circuit. Uh, but to have that group come together and do that together as a community, uh, so that we can move forward.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Anybody else? All right. Well, I thank you all for your remarks. We have a lot to think about. We will, we will discuss this in our next meeting, which will be the Wednesday, the fourth of November.